Welcome, and I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings, Father. We thank you for the opportunity to serve you in this way, Father. We just pray that you grant us your wonderful and very needed wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment, Father. Help us to go through each and every problem in detail and decision, Father, in a way that honors and pleases you in accordance with your word and your standard, which is the only one that matters, Father. We pray for all the families as we get together with our church families this weekend for Easter, Father. I pray that we lift up your name, please you with all that we do, magnify you, and just, again, thank you for all that you already have done and promised to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Administrative Committee, Public Works Committee, work session, and council meetings held on March 19th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 15th through the 21st. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payments of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Have any of those this morning? We do have a want to recognize a special guest. You may have heard us talk about receiving $6.5 million from Congressman Adherold's office for the study of relocating Albert Raines Boulevard or Highway 411, and we have hired the Volkert Firm, which is headquartered in Mobile, Alabama. And today with us, we have Philip Russell with Volkert, and he's going to be kind of the lead person from Volkert, and I'd like to invite Philip to come up and just introduce himself, say a few words. Philip said he was on his way to Atlanta, saw we were having our meeting, and was kind enough to stop in and to be here. So Philip, welcome to Gadsden and welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Back, and I got the pleasure, I think, to meet most of you guys at the League of Municipalities meeting about a month ago, I guess it was, in Washington, DC. And just on behalf of Volkert, I want to tell you, thank you so much for allowing us to work for you. It means a lot to us, and we won't let you down, and look forward to a very exciting project, and thank you again for recognizing me.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here, and safe travels.
All right.
I mean, I'll just take this opportunity to say thank you for all those first aid kits and all the golf tournament bags that I get. I use those Band-Aids all the time on the golf course from Volkert. I'm not kidding. I probably got 10 of those things.
Oh, no. You may want to share some with Councilman Robinson.
I'm telling you.
That's good.
Clutch.
All right. Item eight is unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3540 for Gadsden Sports Park roadway lighting project. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to A&amp;S Electrical Contractors, Incorporated, and the amount is $174,900. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution awarding bid number 3541 for a new concession stand and tournament office facility at the Gadsden Sports Park. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to Bob Smith Construction Company, Incorporated, and the amount is $303,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Any idea when these two projects are going to start?
So once you award them, we'll send out the notices, let the contractors secure their needed bonds, insurance, et cetera, and usually within about 30 to 45 days, both will be started.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Heath. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing expenditure of discretionary funds to the Gadsden City Board of Education for summer programs. This is for administration of reading and math programs during the summer months for children attending city schools. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Is that request still before this body? I was under the impression that those funds had been located somewhere else. I was out. I didn't hear the most recent discussion on this, I don't think.
Oh, you want to answer that? Okay. The funds were found through a, was it the tax, the property tax increase?
Yeah.
Of about $64,000 and some change, I believe. That is already earmarked for the school system.
Uh huh.
So I think due to the good detective work of our finance office and the Board of Education's financial director, they were able to discover those funds.
But this is just really a general clarification that should we need to contribute funds where already? Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Agenda item numbers 12 through 15 are ordinances authorizing conveyance of property from the City of Gadsden to the Gadsden City Board of Education. So this is, item 12 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property generally known as the Mitchell Community Center Baseball and Track and Soccer Field. Item 13 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of Walnut Park Elementary School and Walnut Park Community Center. Item 14 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of the Raymond Hill and Ray Thompson Community Centers. And then item 15 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of the track and soccer field adjacent to Gadsden City High School. These ordinances have been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on them next week. All right. Item 16 is new business. I believe we have a few items today in new business. Councilman Wilson, do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure, I can. Okay.
Thank you.
First, we have a resolution from the Legal Department, 2024-233, which is authorizing the First Amendment to the lease agreement with the IDA. This will be a lease. The lease will be amended for the rent to be, to total $108,036 consecutive monthly installments of $3,000 per month. So if there's no objections, I'd like to consider this under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt. The next one, Mr. President, is 2024-247. This is a resolution sent to us by the Community Development Block Grant Program, authorizing CDBG Program Housing Rehabilitation Services Agreement with Site, Inc. It's my understanding that this is a general contractor that will oversee our Housing Rehabilitation Services Program through HUD and the CDBG. Essentially, there's more information, and there's going to be some workshops that are going to be announced here soon, but some of you may recall in the past, we had a program that would allow you to receive funds through HUD, through our Community Development Block Grant Program, to make repairs and necessary renovations to your house. For example, if you need a new roof, or if you need new windows, or a new HVAC unit, and you meet certain federal guidelines, income guidelines, then you would qualify for this housing rehabilitation program, which would give you some federal dollars to help with that rehabilitation. So anytime we can get federal dollars and put it back in the hands of citizens, I'm for it. So if nobody has any objections, I'd like to go ahead and take action on this today by suspending the rules.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And Mr. President, if I could, I'll just go ahead and throw this out here so I don't have to do it later, but April 4th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Downtown Civic Center will be a technical assistance workshop for how to navigate this CDBG housing program, exactly what the guidelines are, what the process is for applying for the funds, and how that program's administered. So again, April 4th, 11:00 to 3:00 o'clock at the Downtown Civic Center, right here on Broad Street, 623 Broad Street. You can get a lot more information about that. And then there's another work session, a free hands-on construction skills training program that is being put on April 1st from 11:00 to 3:00 at the venue at Coosa Landing. So one of these, the one on April 1st is a workshop on construction skills training, basically how to make some of these repairs yourself at your home. And the next one is a technical assistance workshop that'll help you navigate the actual application process. So, thank you.
Thank you for saying that. Appreciate it. Is that all of yours that you have?
Yes, sir.
All right. I believe we, Councilman Avery, do you have one?
Mr. President, I bring before for new business today, brought from the request from the Engineer Department, authorizing amendment number three to agreement with CDBG. The CDBG provides a drainage report for the City of Gadsden near the Agri-Cola Shopping Center since the elected Phase One, which is generally the largest attention-pun near the intersection of North 11th Street, Jacksonville Street, downstream ditch cover improvements North 12th Street, Alabama Highway 211, to design a Phase One underway in its anticipation. So going into Phase Two, if I am correct, ditch improvements between Jacksonville Street, Tuscaloosa Court, Tuscaloosa Avenue, storm drainage inlets covered amongst Tuscaloosa Avenue from Spring Street to Evans Street. And to sum up, this intent of this infrastructure is to improve the stormwater drainage network capacity, which providing a framework for further upstream work as outlined in the drainage report before, previous, I'm sorry. So I asked this be considered for new business today.
Right. Councilman Smith had a second?
Those in, I'm sorry. Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Adopt, please. Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
If I could highlight, Mr. President, this is a budgeted expenditure that is budgeted out of the ARP funds.
Thank you. Councilwoman Latham, I believe you have an item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have resolutions for several, resolution accepting permanent drainage easement, and this is in the Adams Park area. There are several of these. First one is 2024-253, resolution accepting permanent drainage easement from Barbara Jean and Myra Lynch. Then there is 2024-254, resolution accepting permanent drainage easement from Penny Boswell-Bush. 2024-255, resolution accepting permanent drainage easement from Nathan Lewis and Elvy Carter. 2024-256, resolution accepting permanent drainage easement for Derek Hunt. Resolution 2024-257, accept the drainage easement for Kristy Roden. 2024-258, resolution accepting permanent drainage easement for Alicia Veal. And then resolution 2024-260, authorizing acceptance of temporary construction easement for Barbara Jean and Myra Lynch to be considered today.
Clerk, will you, I'll let you get settled over there. Councilman Smith's had a second.
All righty, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Got a little behind there, looking at my paperwork. Those in favor to consider all seven resolutions under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all seven resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any other items for new business?
I have one, Mr. President.
All right.
This is requested by Nakalula Falls Park. It's 2024-259. It's a resolution approving a special event alcoholic beverage license for a Friends of the Falls feast event. It's a fundraiser we're having on April 20th there at the Falls. We're going to have fire pits, we're going to have fireworks, we're going to have food trucks, and it's an event where you purchase a ticket, so therefore, if we're going to have some alcoholic beverages, you'd have to have this license to have that. But it's just a fundraiser. We're going to have a good time, April 20th, Saturday night. Hope I'll, we'll tell you a little more about it when it gets closer to time.
Sure.
I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this for immediate consent.
All right. There's a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. I believe that concludes items in new business. Move to item 17, is reserved for department reports, committees, and boards. I believe we have a department report today. Janet Terrence is coming to tell us all kind of good news. Janet, good to see you this morning.
It is good to see you, and thank you, guys, for letting me come and speak for a second. Councilman Robinson, happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
So I wanted to come and tell you, guys, about a really exciting event that we have co-partnered with, and she's going to be here today, but unfortunately, she is sick. But we have an exciting event that's going to take place this Thursday. We are a partner with SNAP Ed, which is the Etowah County Extension through the Board of Education. They are funded through the University of Auburn, and they are really involved-
I'm sorry, Janet. Auburn University.
Auburn, oh, I'm so sorry. Auburn University, yes.
You have University of Alabama.
I'm used to saying University of Alabama. I'm sorry about that, but now you got my thought process off. So they are very involved with the Move Alabama, keeping Alabama healthy, and their focus is to embrace a healthy and active lifestyle. So this Thursday, we have a free event, which is going to be located on Riverside Drive, which is where the ice skating rink took place, down by Morana Park. It is going to be a color run and a health fair. We invite families to come out, wear your white t-shirts, and we have three different times that the, we'll do the blast off for the run, the colored powder will go in the air, there'll be all kind of different organizations set up and hand out, you know, water and kind of fun stuff for the families to enjoy. And although the event is free, we do ask anybody who could bring, like a staple item, staple item, like healthy food item, to put with the food bank that they do for the schools as a donation. We are asking that. I've brought some flyers, in case you guys don't have any. Y'all can take one and pass it around, maybe hang it up at where there's some children and families that might want to get active and get involved. But it's going to be a fun day. My department's going to be there. We're going to set up a booth. I know that Tina King is going to be there. She's going to be doing a sign-up for Clean Up Gadsden Day. I think Nakalula is coming, the Fire Department's coming, so there'll be a strong presence there from the City of Gadsden.
All right. Well, that sounds like a fun event, and appreciate the partnership and anything like that we need to get behind and promote, most certainly, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir, and we'll have lots of other information coming up on things that we are partnering with SNAP Ed on, as well as other events that are happening here in Gadsden, such as the Parrot Head Party at the AMP. Tickets are on sale. And then all the other stuff with Farmer's Market, the Summer Concert Series, so lots of good stuff happening, and we look forward to talking to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other department reports or committees? If not, we'll move to remarks by Mayor and Council. Mayor Ford is out of town today, and Brett has a couple of announcements on behalf of the mayor.
To add to what Janet said, we have lots going on in the City of Gadsden this spring, ton of events that her team's leading and other entities across the city, so don't forget to check out the Greater Gadsden Tourism Events Calendar. It has pretty much a comprehensive list of what's going on around town. The other thing I wanted to share is, we'll share this every week until the date, April 26th is going to be our annual cleanup day, Citywide Cleanup Day. So last year, we started this, and it was just city employees to try to get a feel for how we logistically organize that, and it was so well attended, and we produced tons of litter that was just illegally dumped all over the city and got it to where it was supposed to be in the appropriate landfills, that people in the community asked, I wish I could have participated. So we're opening that opportunity up this year. So if anybody wants to, you know, get their hands dirty, so to speak, with us, city workers alongside us, mark down April 26th, and we will be putting a sign-up form up on the website with all the detailed information of where you can meet, how you can pick a location, and those kinds of things. The other thing I wanted to share is this week being spring break for most students in Etowah County. Nakalula Falls has a buy-one-get-one deal on mini golf, so they want to encourage children and families to get out there and enjoy that asset up there, and offering that deal, and they're going to be open extended hours because of the week being spring break and people's activities going on around the city. So they're doing 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. this week, so encouraging everybody to get with their family and friends and get outside. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Brett. I appreciate that. All right. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Back. Let me say happy birthday to Councilman Robinson. And also, I just want to kind of say something to District One on some issues that we are facing with trash, and I overall know that it is not, it's not the community or the people who are living in those districts, but I'm going to ask you to keep reporting as you have been, because literally, people are riding through at night dumping, and I've heard Councilman Avery make statements as it relates to District Three. But I'm asking you to, where you see those people doing it, if you can get a tag number, I'm not asking you to engage, but if you can get a tag number where you see it, and when you turn those complaints in, let us know, and we are doing our best to try to handle that and eliminate that, especially on those roles that go from one end to the other end in a community and out where that's taking place. So thank you, District One, for your help with that. That's all I have, President Back.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the absence of Mayor Ford, want to thank Mayor Ford and staff and department heads for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Heath Williamson, and the Engineering Department. East Megan is looking amazing and feeling amazing driving over those tracks eastbound over on East Megan, so we're excited about that project that is underway. Happy birthday, Councilman Robinson. Thank you all for the birthday wishes on last week. Today, we're giving out food at New Destiny. Normally, that's a smooth operation on Goldenrod, but due to the rain, we may have lots of food left over, so if there's anybody that's in need, send them to New Destiny, and I'm sure we may have some left over. Every year, we do a big gas giveaway. Sometimes it causes traffic problems. Thank Chief Jaggers and the Police Department for the past few years for working with us. We only do it once a year. It's spring break this year. Easter is following spring break, so we're going to do that from inside the church this year for the first time. So for these officers that's here, Chief Jaggers, we may have some congestion and some bottlenecking up that way. Want to let you know in advance before you start getting calls, but sometimes trying to help people, it calls for some kingdom chaos. But thank you for your cooperation with us, and that's all I have. Happy Easter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, District Three cleanup will be, the date will be announced coming soon, as we're partnering with PALS and Keep Etowah Beautiful. And so we do have a district meeting that I also will announce soon, so stay tuned to Stay tuned to the City of Gadsden website as it relates to the app that is going to be helpful, and then we'll go over a particular app that I've asked people to, on a social media platform, to download as it relates to the date, time, and things of that nature when it comes to concerning issues in the community. We had a big one this weekend that was reported, a host of tires and other items that were thrown on a particular street that is continuously being troublesome. So to the residents, if you see this, just report it. Your report is anonymous, so you're not asked to identify yourself, and so hopefully, this again will come to a head soon with cameras and different other devices that we can maybe get to kind of maybe avoid some of these announcements, but nevertheless, we'll continue to do our part as we ask that you lend a helping hand. Happy birthday, Chris, and I hope everyone be safe out here on this rainy day. I end my comments.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, welcome back.
Thank you. I feel like I have to reintroduce myself. It's been two or three weeks, but I'm all better. I'm just getting hot and sick. Happy Easter, everybody. Good morning to everyone except for the Yale Bulldogs. Happy birthday to my friend, Chris Robinson. And the only other thing, I know Chris had planned to maybe say something about it, but I'm afraid he'll mess it up, and this is too important, so. Back Forty Beer Company has been named as the winner in the state of Alabama of the best bar in Braves country in Alabama, so now we go on to the finals, which is one bar or restaurant from Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi, Tennessee, North Carolina, and South Carolina. So those are the six states that are considered Braves country. So we are now facing five other bars or restaurants in Braves country to be named the best bar in Braves country to watch a Braves baseball game. So if you get a chance, go to braves.com/bestbar. You can click on it. You'll see Back Forty. You can vote on it. I think it'd be a great honor for Gadsden to say that we have the best restaurant and bar area in the South to watch a Braves game at, so.
Now, what's the name of that bar?
It's Back Forty Beer Company, and as Kent likes to remind me all the time, that we stole his last name in the naming of our business. Yeah.
It is what it is.
It's Kent Back Forty, according to-
I call it Kent Back Forty.
Yeah, according to Council President Back.
Now, they also go on that Back Forty Facebook page. It's easier to go that way.
Yeah, you can go to the Back Forty Facebook page, or just, like I said, go to braves.com/bestbars, and it'll be right there where you can click on it and vote.
Good deal. Congratulations.
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra?
Yes, I just want to wish everyone a blessed and happy Easter.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson, birthday boy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Easter to everybody. Thanks, everybody, for the birthday wishes. It is, today is actually my birthday, so that kind of, we've had two in a row fall on Tuesdays, so we get cupcakes back-to-back. Thanks, everybody, for these. And, yeah, I've already voted for the Back Forty. I think that's a good, a great honor for them to win that best bar to watch. Do they like being called a bar, though, Back Forty? Best beer establishment?
No, it's just the name of the contest. Best bar in Braves country. I think it's more about alliteration, how best bar Braves, it kind of rolls off the tongue.
Well, anyway, everybody go out and vote for that, then.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Just want to wish everybody a happy Easter. This is, you know, Palm Sunday was, this past Sunday, Easter Sunday coming up. Also be reminded that it's spring break in Gadsden and Etowah County and a lot of children are going to be out of school, obviously, so please pay attention to your driving. Please don't speed on our neighborhood streets and that'll just be, you know, just keep, keep that in mind. We've got more, more people out. And I want to bring up an, an announcement, you know, the historic Pittman Theater is just that. It's an historic location downtown Gadsden, Downtown Gadsden Incorporated, DGI, Kay Moore and Steve Gilbert, who's a local businessman who is a member of DGI, are putting on a concert with Damon Johnson, April the 25th, and the floor seats are already sold out, but there are 250 balcony seats and between probably 70 and 80 of those tickets have already been sold. So just want to put a mention out there about this. Reason why it's kind of important, Damon Johnson is a local guy. He's kind of, I think, from Collinsville area, but he was one of the founding members of Brother Kane, for those of you old enough to, to remember Brother Kane. He's the current lead guitarist for the band Leonard Skinnerd. They travel all over the world, played the stadiums, 80, 90,000 people on a consistent basis, and he's done numerous other things. He was in Alice Cooper, was the lead guitarist for, for Alice Cooper, extremely talented and get to musician, now lives in Nashville. He's a very sought after studio musician and, and he's, he kind of calls Gadsden home and loves to play at the Pittman. You haven't been in there for a concert lately. There's been a lot of improvements done acoustically. It's really becoming a kind of go-to place for artists to come and, and to play. So he's also bringing in one of his best friends, a guy named Buck Johnson. That name may sound familiar. Buck Johnson is the keyboard player for a, a band called Aerosmith. If any of y'all have ever heard of Aerosmith, he's their, he's their keyboard player. And he also plays in a group called the Hollywood Vampires, and they're a real popular group and they travel all, all over the world. So those two guys are going to be at the Pittman Theater, April 25th, and it's just a, I mean, it's a really rare chance to see world-class musical talent. And speaking of world-class, the bass player that night is going to be our very own John Player. I think many of you know John Player from here in Gadsden, extremely gifted, talented musician. He could probably tour with these guys if he just chose to do so. John chooses to stay local, but he's going to be playing. And then the opening act is a, a guy that's been around for over 30 years, Albert Simpson. If you've ever heard or seen Albert Simpson, you, you know that he is, it is, he by himself is worth going to, to the Pittman just, just to see him. So it's going to be a great night. It's going to be, there's people coming from Nashville to see this. There's people coming from Atlanta. A member of the Atlanta Rhythm Section is probably going to sit in on a couple of songs, a couple of sets. It's just going to be a pretty special night. So balcony seats are available. You can go to downtowngadsden.com and can click on there and can purchase your tickets. So just wanted to give a shout out to Kay Moore and Steve Gilbert for organizing this event. All the proceeds will go to DGI for all the wonderful things that Kay Moore and her board do for downtown Gadsden.